A little session in honor of Dr. Brian Street, who was a kind of a renowned person at Penn GSE, but also really part of the family here at Penn GSE. He was a leading faculty for many years. He taught courses, mentored students, and many of us were happy to have been able to learn from him, from his legacy as well as from his work. So we have a little bit of the structure. We've invited a number of representatives of the different spheres of influence and connections Brian's like. Efforts who are kicking, Kings College, at the GSE, Dr. Nancy Hornberger at Penn GSE, Dr. Rob Simon, who's at John Coase State, and Dr. Phil Nichols, who's at Yale University. And these folks have had a range of connections with Brian and opportunities to be in conversation with his work and to collaborate with him. But we also want to make this more interactive and to have an opportunity to learn from you and hear from you about different connections that come with Brian and his work. So just to get a little bit of a sense, how many in the audience here knew Brian personally? And how many of you are familiar with his work? So we want to, I think in the spirit of what Brian would appreciate, is to start the conversation but not end it with just some people having a conversation, but really providing an opportunity to share these connections and share our own perspectives and experiences with each other. So we'll give you a little chance after folks have spoken to connect with people around you and then we'll also open it up to a broader discussion. There's no set order. If somebody wants to start, so.
We do this quicker meeting style?
Yeah.
So maybe I'll move to speed.
I was open ears, didn't think it was going to be a little bit of a crowd but you might.
No, no, I thought you'd do that.
No, you didn't want to.
Okay. So we were asked three questions. I tried to address them, but I won't tell you what they were. You'll have to validate whether I did it or not. So first of all, I have so many vivid memories of conversations and times together with Brian. And they began here at Penn, almost the year I arrived from U C. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. But these conversations continued in Brighton, where he lived, at Kings, where he lived and moved, and also in conferences really all over the world, there were collaborations that we engaged in. Brian generously shared his life, his family, his work with me, but with truly everyone, so many over the years. He was a powerhouse of a scholar, colleague, and friend. And I think of him mainly as a friend, friendship that we had. It's rare to find such brilliance, generosity, and indefatigability, all wrapped up in one team and me. It was hard to gather only hundreds and thousands of people whose lives he touched in not just superficial but deep and enduring ways, and mine was certainly among those. Our first encounter here at Penn was when Brian presented his recently published book, Literacy in Theory and Practice, groundbreaking book from 1984. And I felt some resonance immediately between his ways of thinking and my ways of thinking about literacy, multilingualism, education, ethnography. And those continued to be the strands that we talked about. We seem to never run out of things to talk about, but I really think that's mainly due to Brian's ebullience and his intellectual generosity. We have, as I said, these mutual visits back and forth. We seem to keep meeting up at conferences in the UK. Sometimes these were planned, sometimes these were serendipitous. Netherlands, France, Mexico, I can remember. I think Nigeria and South Africa. And when I first wrote The Continuum of My Literacy, which some of you know, was a piece of my work that has sort of continued on through the decades. Brian was one of only three scholars I first showed it to. Another one was Fred Erickson of the Venn Air. So you have them to thank for encouraging me to go forward with that. He later wrote an afterword for that volume edited on The Continuum of My Literacy. And he also graciously agreed to edit one of the volumes of Encyclopedia of Language and Education that edited in 1996. He did the volume on literacy and education, which I'm sure many of you have encountered. He later then updated and revised it for the third edition. All of that's a huge amount of work, years of work. So those are some of the ways I've interacted with Brian and our scholarship, mutual scholarship. But really, a lot of it is right here at Penn. And as Maria explained, he mentored so many students here. He taught courses. This dates back to, well, in large part, Susan Lydgen and her colleagues, who invited Brian to teach for the Reading and Writing Literacy Program in the 1980s. And that was a practice that ended up happening pretty much every other year, right up until 2013. He taught a course called Literacy: Social and Historical Perspectives. And he taught a course called Issues in Language and Power. And I always, I'm sure that Susan and others, recommended their students to take these courses. Invariably, they loved them. Invariably, they asked Brian to be on their dissertation. And invariably, Brian agreed to do it because he was so generous with his time and his work. So he was very involved across the years here. And as the years went on and he moved from Sussex University to Kings College in London in 1996, we began, Susan again, Stan Norton was also involved in this. I was involved in it. And on the King's side, not only Brian, but also late forward, Constance Leon, and Beth Ranford, and Roxy Harris, and now others. We will hear about them in a minute. We started to involve some help of Penn-Kings Link, which continues to operate till today. We had a pre-Forum meeting, just before the Edna's pre-Forum, organized now by Rob Moore, my colleague, and PhD student, I'm not even going to name him. And Brian presented at the Edna's pre-Forum countless times. I mean, it would be impossible to count the number of sessions that he organized, recruited students from this side and that side upon colleagues, and brought them with him to the Forum. And he was a plenary speaker more than once. One I remember in particular. Some of you may also remember. Your memories might have been sparked a few years ago when they included a video clip about this in a video on the meeting. There was a session in Bidsbury Room with Brian Street and David Barton doing a conversation. The lights suddenly went totally out. It was pitch black here, absolutely pitch black. And right on the screen, all you hear is voices. You don't see anything. And then Brian started dancing around and putting the lights back on. So that's an example of Brian's ebullience and memorability. I think I will probably stop about there. I think I've covered most of the things I wanted to mention. Just to say that the link between all these activities, which have taken many different forms, has always been the ideas and exchange among colleagues pursuing similar questions around the intersections of language, literacy, and education in the base urban and multilingual world. In short, Brian's scholarship, his collegiality, his friendship, and legacy are very much present with us here in this room and at this event. For the chance to say something. We treasure his memory and his legacy here so much.
So in my contribution to this special session dedicated to the memory of Brian, I will first respond to the questions in and towards by the organizers. And unlike Nancy, I'll give you the questions. I will keep my answers short. As I also want to bring out a message from a colleague, Constance Leon, one of Brian's closest academic collaborators and one of his closest friends, who I regret that she cannot be with us on this occasion. So to the first question, what has Brian's intellectual project meant to me as a colleague and friend? I joined the Department of Education at Kings College London in 2006, ten years after Brian had taken up his professorship in language and literacy there. From the beginning, Brian was my academic mentor and appraiser, which gave me the advantage and joy of numerous one-to-one meetings. The discussion would always stretch far beyond my own academic progress to more fundamental issues such as ongoing theory building in academic literacies, the tribalism in the debates around academic literacy pedagogy, and the need to draw on different theoretical models for an effective academic literacy pedagogy. Unlike some other scholars in the field, Brian never had a ghetto view but welcomed the bringing together of various theoretical perspectives. As a staff member at Kings and not a very well-established academic, I was a little apprehensive before my first meeting with Brian as my mentor. A meeting with such an eminent scholar, much of whose work I had read and admired a lot. This apprehension proved to be entirely groundless. It was a characteristic of Brian that he never took on the role of superiority. And I'm convinced that he never really felt superior to anyone he dealt with or was ever judgmental about anyone. He made his conversation partners feel equal, and that resulted in really good conversations, which would often end up in the neighboring pub, the Auberge. And I'm sure several of you have been there. The Auberge has hosted Brian with his colleagues and students for two decades. Most regularly, in the early evening of Tuesdays after the R W L L, the Research Workshop in Language and Literacies, which was an institution itself that Brian had created as a weekly forum for PhD students and academic staff. Brian loved bringing people together and conducting academic and other conversations in the pub. I feel sad to say that these gatherings have more or less come to an end after Brian left us. Nowadays, after the R W L L, everybody rushes past the Auberge on their way home. I now address the other two questions with which I will collapse to give time for Constance's contribution. So the questions are, how have Brian's ideas resonated with my own work and what is his legacy in research and practice? My work is in academic literacy. And my main interest has always been in pedagogic approaches to help novice students socialize into their academic discourse communities. I've always followed and promoted genre-based methods. But initially, my approach was rather text-focused. Brian's work, in which he applied concepts from the new literacy studies to academic literacy, has considerably widened my perspectives beyond genres and texts. And of course, he has not only widened my perspective but the perspectives of, by now, a whole generation of language and literacy practitioners. It was a seminal 1998 paper by Mary Lee and Brian that brought home to practitioners the understanding of literacy as social practice involving institutional power relations and student identity problems. The paper had great impact, first in the UK and soon internationally, and has resulted in many practitioners, policymakers, and institutions moving away from a skills-based deficit model of student writing. The academic literacy approach encouraged students to question and critique institutional requirements and to draw on their existing cultural and linguistic resources. This approach is now widespread and has been benefiting students for over 20 years. This is but one of Brian's legacies. To finish my part, and before I move on, to give you Constance's message, I would like to read from my recent email correspondence with Lalo, Brian's wife. I asked her whether she would come to the Forum as there was a special session for Brian. She responded that she was too busy to come and then wrote the following. "I'm not sure how many times I went to the Forum with Brian. Probably four times. He really enjoyed and valued conversations and sessions that took place during the Forum. Philadelphia had a special place in his life. Once, Brian framed pictures of what he called 'the triangle of his life.' In that triangle, there was a picture from his window in Brighton, a picture of us with friends in my house in Brazil, and a picture of him with some friends celebrating his birthday in Philly. Brian took this triangle with him to the hospice for the last phase of his life." So a little break and then I move on to Constance's message. So Constance writes, "We can easily get lost in the midst of the whirlwind of teaching, marking student assignments, presenting papers at conferences and seminars, and writing papers and books. As I rush from one job to the next, I often feel that the now and the next thing we have to deliver is to be all and all of everything that's going on. Such is the life of a jobbing academic. But wait a minute. What's this thing that has just landed on my desk? And I have to go to the computer to show you the thing that has just arrived on Constance's desk. I find it smooth." Can you see this? This is the first shift for Brian Street, which unfortunately was published, presumably. "Re-theorizing Literacy Practices and Constance's Rights." I've had the good fortune to work with David Blum, Lalo Castaneda, and Jennifer Rausch on this collection of essays. In many ways, it was a privilege to have the opportunity to edit the wonderful material of this book. This collection is dedicated to charting the diverse ways in which researchers and scholars from different parts of the world try to work with and understand ordinary folks as they use language and literacy to do something in the world. Whether we are talking about Czechoslovakia literacy in Peru, testing reading in South Africa, learning to read critically in a suburban London school, writing for academic purposes in UK or US contexts. A common thread that runs through the collection is the idea of literacy as social practice, a cornerstone in Brian's lifetime contribution. Brian's work will continue to carry the torch of human conviviality and boundless optimism and to provide clarity in the moments where we can't see clearly our way ahead in the fog of fast time. But at the end of it all, there's always the word, words of joy and sadness, oppression and freedom, deprivation and liberty. We should celebrate our community's collective efforts to find better ways of using words to elucidate our experiences and predicaments as well as to reflect on our own thoughts and sentiments. Slow down, talk to people, and think, I hear Brian say, to which I might add, yes, let's do that with a little jazz and wine."
I mean, after that, it's very emotional to hear those words about Brian. We'll tell a little smaller story since they've both so beautifully sketched the larger picture. I met Brian, as did Nancy, at this conference in 1985. It was an international literacy conference held at the Wharton School. Brian and Dan Wagner, I think, orchestrated it. Brian had just published, as has been said already, the 1984 seven-volume Literacy in Theory and Practice, based on his ethnographic research in Iran, you may remember, from which he developed theories of the autonomous and ideological models of literacy. Somewhere this week, I thought I might try to explain it first, in case some of you didn't know. But I just decided that I'm not doing that. And if you don't know what they are, I suggest you read. So for those of you who aren't familiar, just understand, with Shirley Heath's work on literacy events and Freda Epstein's indescribable ethnographic perspective, both of whom, by the way, were on the faculty at GSE during the 80s. Brian's theoretical framing was nevertheless a dramatic breakthrough, as we've said, for the field of literacy studies in the beginning of what I remember as a significant era of inquiry and debate at GSE as well as across the US and beyond. His 1984 book was To Become, as Dan Wagner has written, one of the go-to books on how does the literature see in the field. Immediately after the conference, Brian was invited to become affiliated with the National Center on Adult Literacy at Penn, which was Dan's then. Subsequently, become a visiting faculty member at GSE. Happily located, I don't know, as competition, sweet as subject. His place at GSE, happily, was in the Reading-Brian-Literacy Program, as was mentioned. So as Brian's colleague and eventually his friend, I was privileged to keep in touch with him and to see him, at least annually, when he came to Philadelphia to teach his famous course, Literacy in Social and Historical Perspectives, as well as to interact with him as we discussed our current writing and research projects. And so for the next three decades, there were many collaborations with Brian and his colleagues that I was privileged to participate in. Multiple presentations by Brian and his students and colleagues at this Forum, several cross-national conferences with Brian when he was at Sussex and later at Kings College London, conferences co-organized by graduate students from the US and England, kind of a rare opportunity. Regular and formal cross-national video, I don't know what the word was going to be. I wrote video seminars. I know that that's a very strange word for the current times, but it was. We had a video camera, and he had a video camera, and we looked at each other across the board.
But these were.
Well, they were, yeah. And then, I think, it was the same thing as, because it was always the folks who was in the RWL then. And then the Penn-Kings Link got formalized. We visited his house and Brian met much more. And importantly, as students came to know him, as Nancy has said, through his writing and his courses, Brian began to participate in and share brilliantly many doctoral dissertations committees. And there's nothing more precious than that activity in this institution, I think, in some ways. So how did his scholarship resonate with my own work? Well, I'm going to tell you a small story about that, and a story that is about 30 years old. The conference in 1985 was, to put it mildly, an intellectual and scholarly game changer for me. As a former high school English teacher and a mentor of teachers in English education and as someone whose degree was in, as it turned out, reading and language arts, I never could figure out what language arts were, for example, the relationship to reading. But that's what we called ourselves. I'd been trying to understand how the field of reading and reading comprehension, which is what the field of reading talked about at the time, was reading comprehension, as maybe it still does, related to the concept of literacy. And I, like others, was only vaguely familiar with the term literacies and the concept of literacy as a social practice that we're beginning to study. More specifically, in 1985, as it happened, several experienced teachers from adult literacy programs in Philadelphia enrolled in our master's program. In contrast to K-12 education, of course, adult education was billed when the term literacy had been used for words for years, but for the specific connotation because people who were adults coming to programs were presumed not to have it. And none of us on the faculty had any experience really with adult literacy and that came into this program to learn from us. Listening to these students and grappling with their questions and concerns, we, the students and adult literacy teachers at Penn, began a collaborative project right after this encounter with Brian with the Center for Literacy, which was a program, a big program here in Philadelphia. Took up a question that these educators had been struggling with. How best to assess adult literacy learners as they entered and progressed through a literacy program? These literacy educators were unanimous in their distaste for the TAE, I don't know how many of you know of the TAE, but it was the reading comprehension vocabulary test for adult learners. And I looked it up on the internet, it still is. So in 1985, with a grant from the Philadelphia National Bank, we started a multi-year collaborative research project called ALIP, the Adult Literacy Assessment Project, with a new challenge now, to figure out what it means for programs to take a literacies as social practices perspective. It turned out, resulted in a dramatically different set of questions and assumptions about the adults who came to this particular program. So with the aura of Brian's ideas floating in our heads, what did we do? We questioned prevailing assumptions about the capabilities and lifestyles of so-called low-liter adults, which was common language in the 80s. We unpacked conflicting conceptions of literacy and literacies, thanks primarily to Brian, who we later learned was working with the various adult literacy programs in a national network in England. Brian worked on the ground, too. He didn't just work in academies and conferences and theoretical frameworks. He actually worked with adult literacy educators in London. We explored what adult learners and educators count as learning, both in and out of formal education. So encouraged by the work of Brian and others, we realized that we needed to construct a much richer conceptual framework for acquiring into the many facets of literacy development in adulthood. A framework that could include the cultural scripts adults groom to and take from learning, their family, school, and community histories, their specific and more global intentions for coming to these programs, their successful experiences learning and teaching in other facets of their lives. And that was a big one. We talked to adults about what they've taught other people. They have taught other people many things, children, peers, neighbors, et cetera. And so learning and teaching was not something that they were so unfamiliar with. Their knowledge of and their questions about the world, and in particular, their tacit and shifting awareness of the forms and functions of written language as experienced in the context of their daily lives. This is what we want to figure out, how you elicit in some kind of opening interview and conversations with adults and how you talk throughout the program about what literacies are all about. The ALIP project thus became an effort to understand the ways that literacy and literacies were lived. I wrote a piece called "Living Literacy" in families, workplaces, and communities. In other words, instead of testing, what was needed was to engage learners and each other in what I now think of as EWORD. The ALIP project thus became an effort to understand the ways literacy and literacies were lived in families, workplaces, and communities. Now, I know that these insights about literacy and ways of doing collaborative inquiry hardly seemed radical in 1929. They're not radical to us now. But in many ways, from my own educational trajectory, the dribbles of working with and reading Brian Street was a kind of title word in my own academic career. As some of you may remember, the ALIP project morphed via NCAL into ALPIM, one of these acronyms. The Adult Literacy Practitioner Inquiry Project, the director I was moving in, and later into PALPIM, the Pennsylvania Adult Literacy Practitioner Inquiry Network. So we're now not just inquiry, we're networks. Led by Lisa Belcher, who was a former student of this program and now professor at Rutgers. I went on to think and write about what we mean by the literacies of teaching and to collaborate with my colleagues Marilyn Cockman Smith and Philadelphia Teaching for Writing Project teachers, which was founded the next year, to explore the possibilities of practitioner inquiry conducted by beginning and experienced teachers and for educational leaders to refrain how we think about fundamental questions, such as what counts as knowledge, what do we mean by practice and community, and how we live an academic life that's oriented toward democratic purposes and social justice ends. So how does Brian's intellectual legacy live on at Penn and beyond? I think we've already intimated many ways in which it does. And many of you have here are part of that. So I remember in a credit So I remember, and I credit Brian for the sheer power and humanity of his ideas, for the immediate usefulness and applicability of his perspectives to work I've been deeply engaged in and committed to over a long time, I credit him for his genuine questions and openness to engage non-combatively. There are lots of other adjectives should probably cover that, but Brian never argued the same way a lot of people argue. He differed, and he explored, and he tried to figure out where it was coming from, and he did not make himself special in those kinds of conversations. People with very different experiences and perspectives. And I remember him for building a transatlantic, transnational conversation over time. Just because we all spoke English, we didn't mean that there were provocative cultural differences among us that sometimes catalyzed outgoing critical inquiry. And also, for the never-ending curiosity and respect that Brian Street infallibly courted his many colleagues and students, whose ideas he honored and explored in profoundly mutual ways over so many years. This intellectual legacy of developing rich theories of literacies from the study of culture and collective practice, I believe lives on in the myriad ways at Penn, in the writing, teaching, and work in the world of RWL and other GSC faculty, many GSC graduates, some of whom are here and certainly could expound on the subject, current students and beyond, and I'm profoundly grateful to him.
These are all very tough acts of honor. And I also already feel a little bit out of place in the sense that I have much less history in terms of knowing Brian and not knowing him as close. So what I can speak here is my experience as a student here at Penn and as someone who was in conversation with him. And even in those ways, I think my experience very much echoes the things that were already here and here today. I was one of the graduate students that walked to his summer classes and also one of the ones that asked to be on our dissertation committee. And I think one of the things that was really powerful, taking that class in the summer, it was the very first class that I took, starting my doctorate at Penn, and it really did sort of frame a lot of the other kind of coursework, my other interactions with professors, and you could really see, actually, how the impact of his ideas had really shaped the entire field that I, at that point, was sort of just getting into, to really understand it. And so it was through that process, sort of getting to see just how, through each of the classes that I took, how Brian's work sort of status sort of underpinned, that sort of was underneath a lot of the coursework that I went through. It was in that class, I kind of came in, and this maybe speaks a little bit to how his ideas have been taken up into other conversations. Coming into that class, I knew I was interested in things like digital media and technology in relation to literacy. And I'd read, already at that point, "Literacy in Theory and Practice," and was interested in how sort of autonomous and ideological models sort of have a similar kind of thrust in, when you talk about technology and technological determinism. And again, very green first class at Penn, and Brian was immediately incredibly supportive and helped me make those links and those connections that became and continues to be the work that I do today. And I think in a lot of ways, I think back to even revisiting syllabus from that class, if anyone remembers that syllabus, just grew each year, nothing was removed from it, it was a list of every reading that possibly relates to any topic, which they're great to use. And yeah, so I continue to revisit those reading lists, and I continue to think back to those kinds of conversations. It's kind of an anchoring that I know, for me, set up a personal kind of trajectory. But I also think an important piece of that, and his legacy is certainly, that and the ideas, as Susan said, the fact that they resonate so much and continue to be useful resources for thinking through the ways that these things kind of reproduce themselves in different ways, but also going along with that, just his generosity and humility as a person and as a scholar. I remember being very intimidated, being in the room with him, and then sort of being said of him just by who he was. And even beyond that class, there was no reason for him to have continued to reach out or stay in touch via email beyond that first class, but he did. And when I did an email for him, it was disorienting, and I was like, okay, and I transcribed it, and then not expecting here to be back, because he's Brian Street, why would he come with me? But that ended up becoming, actually, how a lot of the ideas that became in my dissertations are emerged through those email exchanges, and then even being, if you've come to town for the forum. So I can say personally, not just in my work, but also, I think a lot about, I think I was very fortunate, the professors in general at Penn are all very generous with their time and are all very humble, but from very early on, as the first professor that I interacted with, that was among the Brian's at Penn carried through, and it's something that I know, I think about and try to emulate and aspire to in my own work, both scholarly and also in terms of mentoring students. So it's mostly just to reiterate everything that I was just saying.
All right, I'm last. Thanks, everyone. No, I'm glad you brought up Brian's class, because that, I actually came into, I'm a grad of the Reading and Writing Literacy Program, many of you are, and I came into the program after a thirty-minute conversation with Susan Lidle, which is a story for another day. A day before that, I found out that the GREs were happening the next day, and I had to tape them, and I didn't want to be in a PhD program, but Susan said, "You should apply because it's a way for me to get to know you." So I'm a little naive, apparently, but I wanted to be a classroom teacher, like many of you, I was a teacher, I'd taken some time out from the classroom to be with my Lidle, your son, so I was a full-time dad, and I wanted to go back into the classroom, and that's what I thought I wanted to do. I ended up, I sort of tripped and fell and ended up in a doctoral program, fortunately for me. And Susan said, "You should take this class in the summer." Let's talk about Brian Street, I had no idea who Brian Street was, a class you've heard a lot about, and many, many of us have taken some iteration, see a lot of familiar faces. A couple of you survived the version of this class with me, "Literacy, Social, Historical Perspectives." I'm on my way to this class, I actually had to look up what literacy meant before working in this class. I was a teacher, but I didn't use those words to talk about the work that I did, and that may sound familiar to some of you as classroom teachers. I'm on my way to class, and I meet Maria Pallo, and I meet Erica Mee, and Deb Myers, and many people who became close friends and close colleagues. And I said to Erica, I said, "Do you have any idea what this class is?" Susan told me, I still hadn't met Susan face-to-face, she had a thirty-minute conversation, I took the GREs, I'm now in a program, I'm on my way to Brian Street's class, I have no idea who this is. I straightened Eric out, who I barely know, "Do you know who this is? Do you have any idea what this class is?" She said, "Oh, Dr. Street." So without his work, nothing I do would be possible. Just sitting at that. And Brian's class, such as it was, I won't go into too much detail about it, Brian's class was a couple of planned class sessions and then anything you wanted to be able to do. But I thought about that, I thought about Erica's comment a lot, how Brian's work made so many of our intellectual projects, our teaching lives, our scholarship and work in communities and work in schools, possible in new ways. I think the teachers always, good teachers always intuitively understood something about how classrooms can look more lively, more engaging, and create more, and can be a part of an English curriculum, but maybe wouldn't have named that "literacy" or "literacies"? And maybe wouldn't have necessarily understood through all of the obfuscated sea of policy perspectives and stakeholder perspectives that they're inundated with, that there are these sort of broader ways of thinking about the world. I was frustrated by Brian's class then, because I thought, if there's all of this literacy work, why do schools still look the way they look, for the most part? I'm still a little frustrated about it, quite frankly, and those of you who spend a little time in schools know exactly what I'm talking about. Schools do have time to look the way they look. I think that that's a part of Brian's project that may use for a lot of us to carry forward. But like Erica, I don't know that I could disentangle Brian's influence from that work. So a lot of my work is about inviting children and teachers to co-inquire together participatory action research context, to co-inquire together into social justice issues, and that often involves art and film and all kinds of crazy stuff. And if you're interested in seeing more, learning more about it, four o'clock, this reading film about some of this work in response to issues agenda. So when I think about that, Brian helps me understand that that's literacy, that's meaningful work, that's academic for me, rigorous work, and that it has some place in the world, but also in the field of literacy, which, as I said when I got here, I didn't even know existed anymore. So several years after I was on my way to Brian's class, I get this call from Brian. He can't make it to Penn. So he used to come every other year, and he would teach this class in the summer. This is a core class in our program. I get a call from Brian, "I can't make it to Penn. Can you teach my class for me?" And I thought, "No." And he said, "You're the perfect person to do this." And I said, "I'm really not, Brian, I'm really not." Absolutely, I'll help you with it. And we co-planned this class, and we did all of this in, maybe, ninth semester, I said, "No, Susan remembers this." So I'm suddenly teaching, I'm a doctoral student at Penn, this should, it's not videotaped. I'm a doctoral student at Penn, and I'm about to teach the, one of the key doctoral courses in our program, one of the required courses in our program. I get a couple of courses, and Susan is on the side of the class, I know I'm not supposed to call her and bother her, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this is okay. So I told Susan, I said, "I know you're away, I'm so sorry, but I'm teaching Brian's class." She said, "You're what? None of those people will get credit for the class, you can't do that." Years later...
That's a formal, a formal, I didn't make that.
That wasn't your...
Yeah.
That was the university, whatever sorts of people are. Years later, Brian couldn't come again, and this time I graduated.
(laughing)
And I was able to teach that class, and Deb Broderick was in that class, and Mary Hiewell was in that class, and Adrian Flatt, who left, and I told her, "If she leaves, I'm going to mention her name." So Adrian was in that class, and many, many others, Alicia So, and many others who became close, close friends and close colleagues, who now have their own intellectual projects and have made influence in the world and in the field in all kinds of amazing ways, and I continue to learn from. This year, I'm teaching a version of this class with Ben Dowager, who's back, back there. I had to actually build a syllabus, because Brian didn't need one, like a starting point into entering the sea of literacies, Brian's world. I had to build a syllabus. And this year, with Ben's help, we're finding different kinds of creative ways to invite people to engage with work, and I thought I'd share a couple of those with you. We, does anyone know what a remix poem is?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. I'm going to share a couple remix poems with you. So we asked folks, you know, "I don't really like blackboard or pepper, I don't know what we use here now." We use pepper, what's it called, canvas. I always get a, I struggle with this, we're asking people to do this extraneous work online. We're trying to find creative ways to engage people. So we asked them to take one of the readings, and you could have, you had two choices, you could do an N plus seven poem, which you take a section from the reading, and you circle all of the nouns, and you pick a dictionary, it could be an online Urban Dictionary, it could be the Oxford Dictionary, and you count seven words ahead, and you replace that word, the circle down the word. So it's like literacy math works. And option two was you can write remix poems, you could take a couple of the articles, and you could find lines that stand out to you and construct something meaningful. So I'm going to share a remix sonnet that was written by Ben Part, who is an educator in Toronto and a student in our class. This is a street remix sonnet. I'm just, this is the first of two poems I'm going to share with you, a street remix sonnet. "What it Means to Think of Literacy as a Social Practice. Immensely powerful at political, economic, ideological levels, conceptions of knowledge, identity, and gain contested in relations of power. Engagement between theory and practice, academic and applied concerns. To analyze and contest what counts as literacy. Old and deterministic and reductionist accounts from autonomous to ideological. From observing literacy events to conceptualizing literacy practices. Foregrounding the relationship between formal education, ordinary life, anthropological and cross-cultural. Accounts of actual practice in different cultural settings, potential realized through local practices. Dynamic dialogue, distinctive contribution." The second poem I'd like to share with you was written by Ashley Allen, who is another colleague who I get to work very closely with on our research. Ashley was kind enough to share a remix of the concluding paragraph of Brian Street's article, "New Literacies in Theory and Practice: What are the Implications for Language in Education?" And the billboard number one song, "The Week Brian Street Was Born," which was October 1943, this is Sunday, Monday, or Always, sung by Dean Crosby, written by Jimmy Ben. That was Pausen and Johnny Burke, not by the same, I won't read. The poem is entitled "My Heart Begins: New Pound Literacies, Pound Theory, and Pound Practice." What? By Ashley Allen. "Oh, won't you tell me when there is a message here for education in general and for language in education in particular? We will meet again to take on the task of helping new generations to learn, Sunday, Monday, or always, how to not take things if you're satisfied at face value. To recognize 'I'll be at your side' when people are not talking straight. Sunday, Monday, or always. To see grammar as a means of representing patterns of 'no need to tell me now' experience, and as helping them to build a mental picture of what makes the world go around reality. And what am I to do to make sense of their 'can't I be with you' experience of Sunday, Monday, or always? What goes on around them and inside them? Oh, won't you tell me when? To be aware of the figurative 'we will meet again' devices that lie at the very heart of Sunday, Monday, or always discourse. If you're satisfied to recognize the rich variety of 'I'll be at your side' tropes, no need to tell me now registers in what makes the world go round language forms. To deploy to the full metaphoric potential of language, my heart begins to pound, pound, pound. When at the sight of you. And anthropological poetics has helped researchers to apply these principles to the meanings and uses of literacy in society, and so too, when at the sight of you. See them differently from dominant, narrow perspectives. To now apply these 'what am I to do' principles to school language, and in particular, to 'can't I be with you' language in education, becomes more urgent. As Sunday, Monday, or always, centripal forces and the pressures to take language literally become ever more Sunday, Monday, or always powerful."
Thank you all for sharing your thoughts and ways of Brian, and we want to invite all of you to come to see me a little bit, and first, just to take a minute and walk to the service next table, because I am in a library of teachers. (laughter) We can, uh, we can, uh, we can, yeah. So we can, uh, start from the beginning. (laughter) (inaudible) 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 (laughter) So I was just in a fight. Can you please just share something of what you were talking about, sort of personal responses, some of these questions, your personal recollections that will last of knowing Brian or knowing his work in your own life or... Open it up to others.
I think you rely on really well as a friend, but also I think he's... Reading his work helped me find a home, probably home. And that, it was, you know, it was kind of fun. I mean, you know, it was just like seeing, finding a place to live and grow from. And also telling Professor Eric Sissons it's not always the case that you meet somebody of that kind of stature and it takes you a while to talk about anything, you know, like meaningful. Because it's whatever, you know, there's a book about this, about that. And he was writing immediately about literacy, the work, you, resources, books. And he came to Rochester to visit and he sent a documentary, a meeting about a teacher. And he was funny. And he was writing on the chalkboard. The students were quite predominantly African-American, Latinx, in elementary schools. He was writing British words. And just as he wrote the word arse, the principal walked in. So he was telling the documentary, he's like, "Oh, well, I'm just, you know, talking about the difference between..." Absolutely terrible. And finished with the... He sent a picture once via email of himself on some... You know, he traveled everywhere, going in the jungle and somewhere. Hi, Ken. It's Brian. He's in a shirt. And then like Hawaiian shorts and black knee socks with an umbrella. I thought, oh my God, this is just... Lion, all over the place, you know, running off into some place. Everything was literacy and then he jungle blues. Missing.
It's funny because I, when he visited Philadelphia once, I was a car passenger in the car that he was in. And we rent one of those toll booths and you press and you get a ticket. "Oh, these are such interesting literacies."
Oh, very good.
So he liked it.
You know, I'm from the generation where my academic mentors are my heroes. I'm a teenager, my heroes. And Brian's, you know, one of my heroes. And it began with that kind of following. You know, I remember being at the Endography Forum with a student, maybe talking to you, Rob, and saying, like, "How famous do you have to be to the Lord of War of the Ray?" Because he certainly pulled it off. I think one of the things I really appreciate, and I think about a lot of nostalgia by my mind now, but a lot of it is also very cloaked in like, you know, this kind of like hyperbolic, typical rhetoric. And Brian's research didn't have that, but there were profound radical implications in the work that he did. And it wasn't only, and certainly also, I probably find scholarly poem, but also probably reread my own poem. And I remember I wrote this. It's something we put together for Brian and I was looking for it, but I couldn't find it. But you know, growing up, like I talked about how close I was to my grandparents, but growing up, I, you know, they were always thought to be illiterate and they thought of themselves to be illiterate. And there was a lot of kind of pain or trouble in that. And there were also intermissions in our family that this wasn't the case and, you know. But I had some kind of anger about something like that. And then taking Brian's class, I could come back and reread, you know, their apartment and their literary practices. And then Maria Pollard and I, this notion of... Which came from these neighborhoods in Queens where we have founded every student to be cosmopolitan intellectualist. But it really traces so much back to Brian helping me just really uproot some very embedded fundamental... You know, and now it may not have seemed as radical, but at the time, you know, it really was. And I always feel, you know, embedded to Brian for that. I love the way he would just say, like, "This is where I'm going to pop from here to..."
Yeah, pop pit to Brazil.
I'm going to pop it to Brazil, then Calgary, then... He was just so fearful of flying, like he just seemed like so heroic. All of these places. And then it was just really nice to get to know him. I was just saying, like, when we got to know Adam and Brian, it was the summers. I never felt this spiritual, just like going to hear music, you know. And he loved wine, good or mine. And I was talking to him and he was like, "We can't afford this wine."
Whenever you turned around, he would ask for another bottle. I was probably the trainee that, you know, at the pub, but...
Just a wonderful, warm, and generous soul. I miss him.
Right. How curious to ask you, what did you answer wrong when he said, "We are having this class with Brian Street"?
Well, I had already read his work in my master's program. So I said, "You have to get all these books when you're in a class." But, you know, I think that in that class, we really made ourselves. It was really about the work. About, you would read a very well-renowned book and also one of his students' papers. I mean, that looked interesting and you put those things in conversation. And he said, "We have so much to learn with this paper" by somebody else I don't know who's writing it, but he knew about. And so those hierarchies of scholarship weren't how we lived, his work.
Something I don't think anyone's mentioned, but is part of that picture is all those books he had, he brought together the work of people he met here, there, and their students, colleagues, and, you know, pulled it together into a volume, really important volume. So many voices he brought down that day.
Wish I could say this is better formed, but it's not, so I'll just... As Susan and I said, the things that we take from Brian to now were something all in the days when I was in graduate school. And I did not read this book for us, but I read it after I got here. But it may have been such clarity to so much of the discourse in the field, coming from a lot of different places. And I think the contribution is, one of the many contributions of this work, is the accessibility and yet the rich intellectual thinking all in one. And so that's part of what I feel appreciated. And so I think personally, the man always had time for coffee or lunch or dinner or drinks. And he did it. And so, you know, as a new assistant professor and with everyone taking it, taking what you have to do so seriously and you're taking it even more seriously, to watch this person who lived his intellectual and academic life with a certain kind of carefreeness and a high level of accessibility was really a kind of wonderful thing to see. And a place where I commented and did it often feel, not to have all that vanity on my eyes when I came here. He was the person who was very, who was very open. There was no idea that was an unimportant idea. He may not have liked it all, but no idea was unimportant. And every idea that you felt strongly about was something to be appreciated. And so whether it was King of the Awesome Death, God Reformed, it was a different kind of museum, the Himala Loop, or, you know, except before, having that. There was always just always a kind of decency, a respect for ideas, a respect for all people and a sense of hopelessness about who would come next. That would be more precious.
I remember meeting him in the year 2000. I was just three years after I graduated from my junior degree. And I was employed at City as a field worker in the children's literacy leading project. And so he came to help us to conceptualize it. And we were in partnership with Peter Stein from Vans. And so I was going to follow children going to school and follow them back home to look at the different literacies that we were exposed in. And it was kind of a novel idea for me to be like following these children. That was introduction to Endography. Following the children home, sitting in the streets, playing with them as they were playing. And others passing the Bible saying, "What are you doing?" And so, because it's fascinating that this passing is great with children because people don't often play with children. So I was with children and they were using language in different ways. And I was documenting all this work, you know. I write a lot now because I had to document a lot then. So it's helping to understand. But what the impact that he made on me was having to reflect on my own socialization and literacy. When I think about growing up in a village in the East End, because it's so easy for people to say people don't have literacy in their own community. You find literacy only in school. So maybe we remember how my grandfather and my grandmother could never set foot in school but used literacy in their home, even though and then it did. Because I remember when my mother left the East End Cape province to work in other provinces. My mother is a teacher. She had to communicate with them through letters. And they had to take their letters to me as a great tool child, writing down pages of A4 size. These letters that they were writing to my mother. And then they read back to us. And I had to read back those letters to them and then post them to my mother and then she'd write back to me and read and laugh. And how they used literacy also as going to church and also having the lads coming on a Thursday to sit with the mothers in the village and we'd sit with our grandmas amongst them, using, reading the Bible, but also talking about it. So reading his work really helped me to see how literacy, how people use literacy in their daily lives. Even to remember how when we had events like ceremonies in the village, people brought in things to have, you would write them down, say, "So and so wrote this." So it helped me to understand what was happening in school, what was not happening in school. And back to this day, I feel sad that we, people, schools haven't changed like you just said. Because in South Africa right now, we're back to testing, a lot of testing of children in school. And these large-scale studies proving that our children are not able to read and write. And they just go back to basics. And going back to basics means going back to skills-based approaches and forgetting that there are other literacies that are there that are not, that are marginalized in school.
Listening to this conversation has reminded me that it's a good idea to thank your mentors while they're at time.
That's what we write and thank you for us tonight.
Well, thank you all for being here and for helping to honor Brian and my...
Oh, yes, thank you.
We have a little handout from David Blum who could be here, but pass some information both up close, but how you can contribute to scholarships. A lot of these are by... So thank you all for being here and thank you to our partners.